Oh, that's right. Everyone, please silence their phones. Thank you. I got it all out of my, uh, routine. Okay, let's begin this meeting as we begin, all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In that moment of silence. Almost everyone was listening, except that driver. Thank you, everyone. Okay, um, we normally start with public comments, but just before that this evening, I'm going to make a comment. Um, it is found on the agenda as the Statement on the Open Meetings Act. On February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, some members of the town council attended meetings of the town's planning commission, at which the planning commission was considering an application from the Warfield Companies for a zoning text amendment to allow it to develop the former hospital property entirely with residential uses. I and the town council found their proposal to be unacceptable, as did the residents of Sykesville, who have overwhelmingly expressed their opposition. At the aforementioned planning commission meetings, the council members sat generally separately in the audience and listened to the proceedings without communicating with each other as a group, an activity in which each of us could have engaged separately via Zoom if we had in any way been attempting to evade the requirements of the Open Meetings Act or hide anything from the public. Likewise, we could have individually watched the recording of the meeting and accomplished the same result. The alleged violation of the Open Meetings Act was failure to publish a notice in advance of the planning commission meetings that the council members intended to attend. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended the denial of the application, and on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the council did in fact vote unanimously to do just that. It wasn't until after we denied their application that, in a fit of pique, Warfield Investments Incorporated filed a complaint with the Open Meetings Compliance Board, asserting that the presence of the council members at the planning commission meetings constituted a violation of the Maryland Open Meetings Act. Allegations by Warfield Investments Incorporated included claims that council members were communicating with the planning commission via text messages. This did not occur. The complaint, the complaint tenants were aware of this fact, as there was no meetings by text messages because it obtained copies of all of these texts through a Freedom of Information Act request. The complainant also alleged that there had been sidebar conversations in the hallway outside of the meeting room. These also did not occur, as is plainly evidenced by video and audio of the meeting, where you can see a planning commissioner step away from the proceedings, followed by the audible sound of the bathroom door opening and then closing. All of these allegations were made in an attempt to show that council was trying to improperly influence the planning commission, when in fact, the actions of the planning commission, members of the town council, and the overwhelming voice of public opinion were entirely centered around the fact that the majority of people in our community do not want what the developer is asking for. The Compliance Board wrongly determined that the simple act of four members of the council passively observing the planning commission meeting was part of a step in a process for a matter that was certain to come before the council as the consideration of public business. And thus, the fact that four members engaged in that activity while physically in the same room constituted meetings of the council. The Compliance Board is wrong about that because the proceedings of the planning commission would not, in and of themselves, come before the town council for review because the town council was free to deny the zoning text amendment for any reason or none at all. That is, the town council was not reviewing the merits of a planning commission decision, and the planning commission's recommendation did not need to inform any subsequent action by the town council. The meetings of the planning commission were conducted to allow the planning commission to make a recommendation on a zoning text amendment to the town council. However, the council's action on an application for a zoning text amendment is a legislative act committed to the discretion of the town council, and the council was not required to give any deference to the recommendation of the planning commission. Bootstrapping from its illogical conclusion that the attendance of some council members at the planning commission meetings constituted meetings of the council, even though they did not communicate as a quorum or even among a quorum in real time by serial emails or texts, the board also concluded that text messages sent between two members of the council without copying or otherwise involving a quorum of the council were somehow improper under the Open Meetings Act, even though the board expressly acknowledged that those messages did not themselves constitute a meeting. The board directed the town council to summarize their decision at the next meeting and return a copy of the decision to the board, signed by a quorum of the council. The foregoing has been that summary. But let it be known that none of this body will be signing a copy of the board's unsubstantiated opinion. Since we disagreed with the Compliance Board's opinion, the town decided to seek review of the opinion in the Circuit Court for Carroll County. I attended that hearing. Judge Hecker determined that there was no right of judicial review provided by law, although he expresses concern that we, the mayor and town council of Sykesville, or any subject of the Compliance Board's opinions, has no apparent recourse to challenge those opinions. Judge Hecker did not specifically determine that the board's opinion was correct. At the hearing, the Compliance Board's attorney advised the court that the board could not enforce the directive to summarize and sign the opinion. Notably, Judge Hecker further asserted that the town was free to ignore the board's directives and, by way of telling the court that it was the town's right to express publicly its disagreement with the opinion, stating that we have the right to announce that we absolutely and vehemently disagree with what he called simply an advisory opinion. But even more importantly, we are making this statement, and I should have said this on the outset, that I am making this statement on behalf of the entire council. And so even more importantly, we are making this statement this evening to tell the public that we are acting in your best interest, and you've entrusted us to do this through your vote, your voice, and your confidence. No harm to the public interest and transparency of government was occasioned by my or any members of the council attending the planning commission meetings because the planning commission meetings were properly noticed, were open to the public, and were broadcast, much like this meeting electronically, and the public could see who was in the audience. No public business transpired out of view of the public, which is the ill that the Open Meetings Act is intended to prevent. There was absolutely no evidence of any intent by the council to circumvent the Open Meetings Act. In fact, the circumstances were quite to the contrary. Members of the council could have just as easily watched the proceedings of the planning commission from any remote location. However, council members' very public attendance was to show our citizenry that we were paying attention to the very important process as consideration of these text amendment requests made their way through the very appropriate steps of a very public process. The Open Meetings Act defines the term "meet" to mean to convene a quorum of a body, public body, to consider or transact business. The act itself, act itself, contains a legal presumption that a public body, like us, is, in any given case, has not violated the act and therefore places the burden of proof on the person or entity complaining of the violation. I mention this because the Warfield Company submitted no evidence from which the board could have properly concluded that the town council violated the Open Meetings Act. They merely speculated, as a matter of their own paranoia, that the council had done so. So to summarize, at no time on either evening was a quorum of the council in communication either directly or by serial texts or emails. There is absolutely no case law in support of the conclusion that passive observation of a public meeting by another governmental entity, by individuals who happen to be in the same room but are not interacting as a group constitutes a meeting within the meaning of the Open Meetings Act. Thirdly, the board cited only its own opinions in matters involving very different circumstances than our own, none of which opinions have apparently been reviewed by a court. Fourthly, the board was also incorrect, and it exceeded its authority when it determined that certain communications between fewer than a quorum of council members in an exchange that the board acknowledged did not constitute a meeting were improper. As relevant to this matter, the board's authority is limited to determining whether a public body has met improperly in violation of the act. The board is nowhere charged with making pronouncements as to its view of the propriety of actions of elected officials unrelated to whether they have conducted a meeting in violation of the act. I could finish there, and I'm tempted to. I don't want to minimize anything I've just said because it's been very thoughtfully written by our attorney. I do want to say that I attended the hearing and that the Warfield Investments, um, attorney called the Carroll County Times with what I believe to be a sole purpose and intent of embarrassing the people at this table. Though according to their attorney at the Circuit Court hearing, no one would have ever known about this if the mayor and the council would have simply accepted the board's decision. Obviously, that attorney is unaware of another member of his client's extensive legal team contacting the media before he had even, we had even filed our appeal. Warfield's legal representation went on to infer at the hearing that his client submitted their complaint to protect the people of Sykesville from their elected officials. I, of course, see both the absurdity and the irony in that reasoning, and I'm confident the public will as well. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. Are any members here in the gallery here to make public comment? Is that how many minutes I spoke?
It's seventy-one percent.
Oh, seventy-one percent.
I kept going back to that.
Yes, sir.
If people, seventy-one percent of people want something, and we give it to them, I don't think they're angry.
Thank you, sir. So since no one has signed up for public comment, um, I will move on to the approval of our minutes from the February thirteenth, twenty-three meeting, but first comment that everyone here, I'm sure, received, um, my quick nomenclature request, um, edit change to the minutes, and I have confirmed that that change has been made, so we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes with the said changes.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley. Do I have a second?
I have a second, sir.
Thank you, Council President. All in favor of approval of the minutes from February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes have been accepted into record. The first item of four in our new business category, um, and in fact, the first, second, and third all have to do with, um, our elections. And the first of those is to consider, discuss, act on appointing the following members, or the following, uh, civilians to our Board of Election Supervisors for terms expiring February twenty twenty-five. Um, those individuals are Trevor Evans, Afton Johnson, Carmen McAvoy as Board of Election Supervisors, and as, um, alternates, Lauren Hanratty, and Isaac, and I'm going to say his name correctly because there's a T at the end, right?
No T.
No T. Say your name for me, Isaac.
Noberon.
Noberon. I've been saying it wrong for two and a half years.
Forty-five.
Here we go. Isaac Noberon. Thank you, sir. Um, so, uh, at this point, what I would like to do is, first, we have to vote on that, and then I provide them with the oath. Is that accurate? Okay, so, uh, any, any motion for that movement to take place?
I motion to, I move to motion.
That we make those appointments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council President. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, all in favor of, uh, appointing those five members to our Board of Election Supervisors, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I could ask them now all to stand. I'll read their names again. And, um, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna all say the oath at one time. Um, and when I, of course, say, state your name, don't say your name, say your actual name. Um, because I won't be able to hear if you're being wise guys, if we're talking at once. Um, and, uh, yes, so we should all be able to do that, and we can, we can say our names all at one time. We don't have to go down the line. Okay? All right. So I state your name, do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and that I will bear faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof. And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, excellent, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Board of Elections Supervisors according to the Constitution and laws of this state. Thank you so much, and congratulations. And I should have said before the oath, I very much appreciate your volunteerism. It's, in my opinion, one of the greatest levels of civilian volunteerism and democracy, so kudos to you. I know this man's done it at the, at the state level and the county, I should say. And I know Carmen's done it before, Trevor, and everybody, so thank you so much. Okay, um, I am going to need Afton, Trevor, Carmen, Lauren, and Isaac to sign these. Might as well have you come up and do that. I'll give them to the town manager. And that way, if you're so inclined, you can cover this.
Thank you all. Appreciate your service.
Is volunteering if you get paid fifteen bucks an hour?
It is. You know it is.
It's a whole day.
I know. It's a long day.
Long day.
That's true.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening, everybody.
You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just gonna throw that out there.
They're smart, so they're gonna run for the hills.
I didn't let Joe acknowledge the reason why a sixth name that's on the agenda was not part of that swearing, if you'd like to.
So there was a work requirement that came up in the last minute that prevented Ms. Alonsa from participating in our election this year, so.
Thank you, sir. All right.
So are we still looking for another alternate, or no?
We're not. We're good with what we have.
Okay.
But only six did apply, right? Total. Yeah.
Thank you for offering that.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to set the pay rate for the Board of Election Supervisors at fifteen bucks per hour worked on Election Day.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley. Thank you, Councilman Schofield. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Fifteen dollars per hour for the Election Day Board of Supervisors, Board of Election Supervisors. And the next item?
I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Kavaloski, Town Clerk, as Assistant Election Secretary.
Motion's on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. I'd like to turn things over to Joe to, uh, explain the whole process of the Assistant Election Secretary.
Yeah, so again, this is a simple process that we follow, uh, you know, for, for the past several elections. The clerk really runs the election here, though the charter does say that the town manager is in charge of the election. That's why, uh, the clerk is appointed as the Assistant Election Supervisor. So one of the reasons why that's so important, particularly, you know, kind of started last year, but, uh, even more so this year, is because of the, uh, the use of mail-in ballots, you know. But prior to last year, we didn't really have very many of those. But having two people that are really in charge of the whole election process during this mail-in ballot phase, so basically prior to Election Day, uh, it's, you know, like I said, it's always good to have a couple, a couple sets of eyes looking at all of those different processes. Um, so again, because mail-in ballots are, uh, something relatively new or new to us, um, you know, that process, it, no matter how a person comes about getting their mail-in ballot, they have to fill out the application, but however that ballot is returned to us, either by in-person, uh, by designated agent, dropping it off at, uh, a certified drop box, which we will, we will again have this year, or just dropping it off in-person to either Carrie or I. That ballot goes through a process to make sure that it is, in fact, the certified ballot that went out in the mail to that individual. Uh, and again, making sure all of those processes and all those checks are done prior to that ballot being placed in the ballot box, uh, is very important. And again, once it goes in the ballot box, it's already certified. So the people that are working on Election Day, they don't have to go through the process of trying to certify or, or match up names or make sure that those ballots are in fact able to be counted. So again, the more people we have looking at this, uh, on the front end just makes the, the day of the election that much smoother and, you know, make sure the people that have volunteered, basically, to, uh, serve, uh, all day on Election Day aren't here even longer, trying to make sure that all those processes are followed. Again, just wanted to make that clear that, um, though we are, uh, appointing the town clerk as the Assistant Election Supervisor, there are at least two people that are gonna be kind of in charge of that process leading up to Election Day.
I have one question. So are you going to be here during the Election Day process and watching in and checking in on things? What, what's that process? And then how is that maybe split between you and Carrie? That would be helpful.
Yeah, so the, the townhouse is open on Election Day, so I'm here usually during all working hours of, of Election Day. It's not until, and again, I don't say I run out here right at four, five o'clock, but, uh, you know, anytime there's an issue or something, something that may come up, you know, Carrie knows that she can bounce anything off me or, or get me here to make sure to answer any question that may arise. Now, that said, you know, Carrie's done this a time or two. Um, so, you know, she's perfectly capable of handling most, uh, most, all operations regarding the election.
And any unforeseen or things that, unpalatable things that may happen, she has you at your disposal, at, at her disposal, as well as the chief. Should someone be electioneering and refuse to follow the rules upon request by Carrie?
That's right.
So there are, there are backups for, for that. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the table. Um, any need for further debate? Okay, um, all in favor of the motion to, uh, appoint Carrie Kavaloski, Town Clerk, as Assistant Election Secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous approval and appointment. Thank you. The, uh, final item of new business is a report on our twenty twenty-three strategic planning, which I know we all received, um, the fruits of that labor, um, after having met for almost half a day, um, a few weeks ago.
It was a solid four, I would say.
It was a solid four, and it was a productive solid four. And I'm still very much appreciative of how, uh, how passionate everyone here at this table is about this particular process of ours and creating our strategic plan. And Joe did a fantastic job putting it all down on paper for us to look at something, so, um, Joe, if you want to take, come here.
Yeah, so again, this is a, really a, uh, I guess a building upon what we, what we completed, uh, last year. So again, the document in front of you is, is based on the feedback that we were able to come up with, uh, there on February fourth. Uh, most of the, uh, information that's included in here is somewhat verbatim from, from two years ago, or I'm sorry, uh, from last year, such as the mission statement and the vision statement, those stayed exactly the same. Uh, all of the goals, uh, the overarching goals are exactly the same. However, some of the objectives that we discussed, uh, did change priority level and move around a little bit. They're in the, um, uh, in the implementation, uh, pages. Uh, the one thing that is new is the, the core values section. That was the one thing we added this, this particular year. And though all of you have seen, uh, I guess, let's just call it the bold words, or the, uh, the ones that we selected for our core values, which were belonging, accountability, resourceful, and ownership, um, you have not seen those, in fact, the, the core vision statements that go along with it. So I, again, I just wanted to point those out to everybody to make sure everybody had a chance to review those um, and then give us an opportunity to discuss those publicly in case there was any changes or any updates that you wanted to make to the document before, uh, we go and implement this. Now, what this document will do will help inform the FY twenty-four budget. So, you know, no, we don't necessarily have to vote on it tonight because again, we will, we will, I'll make sure that this is included when we start that budgeting process, uh, probably in the next month or so.
Great. Thank you. Anyone to my left?
So I, I did have one item, so looking at this again, um, accountability and ownership, they're closely tied together. And, um, one of the things I thought we talked about on reference to accountability had to deal with stewardship, but I didn't see that in the narrative. Um, we certainly allude to that we're gonna take care of everything in the town, which is exactly what I think we're trying to get across there. But, um, I thought that that was one of the driving factors for accountability. If anyone has a different view on that, and Al, I see you're, you're having a look, so yeah.
Uh, I thought, I thought we decided that that was covered in the mission statement, which says, uh, manage public funds efficiently. I thought that was the conversation. It was, it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I remember talking about it there as well. I would feel better if we had the word stewardship in, uh, the document because it is, one of the pieces of accountability has to do with how we're managing the funds of the town. Whereas in accountability and ownership, they're often tied together as almost, um, the same thing. And so the thing that I really liked, the statement about ownership I really liked, was the last one where it says our impassioned service is centered around taking action and building an environment of our own choosing. I really liked that statement. Um, and I, and I thought the key difference or differentiator between the two was in reference to the financial aspects of things. I, I remember it when Leo, you spoke up in reference to it, um, going through, but I don't, you know. Again, I, I'm one opinion here, so I just wanna throw it out on the table.
I, I would also toss out on the table, um, the fact that stewardship, though you do comment very succinctly and, um, very well on the fiscal side of the stewardship thing. Stewardship along the lines of accountability, in my opinion, can also refer to, um, our stewardship of, uh, the, the town's historic nature, its history itself, um, and, and the, the aesthetics. And so there's, there's a stewardship there that obviously most of those things require fiscal, uh, support.
Yeah.
But I think that we can do a lot of stewardship, uh, and, and really just the, what, what the, what the, um, the public perceives to be as, as this elected body, um, without it having anything to do with our stewardship of funds. I'd like to see it in there, too.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, I also just wanted to comment on belonging. Um, I really love how you wrote that up, Joe. I thought that it was very inclusive in the way that you wrote that, based on our conversation. And I just wanted to make comment in reference to that as well. And just for the public, um, what it says, just in case you haven't read it yet, Sykesville is a welcoming community that wants all of its members to feel valued. We strive to make everyone feel connected to Sykesville. We encourage individual contributions and expressions of differing points of view as a way to unify and elevate the experience people have when they are here. One of the things that we're trying to express is what does small-town charm feel like? And how do you articulate it? And I thought that you did a really nice job with that, so I just wanted to say that publicly.
Agreed. Anyone else on my left?
Other than taking, I, I know that we spent an hour and a half on, on zoning in on this and how you took everything that we said and, and made it very decisive and very, um, smooth. Thank you.
Yeah. I wasn't at all surprised.
Go ahead. He's just, right.
I stole most of it from everything else.
Software we use is a good thing in software, so.
Yeah, so I think that the core values, uh, portion of, of this strategic plan, um, will live, outlive us, um, and, and I hope it will. Um, and it doesn't mean that we can't revisit it and continue to, uh, build on it, uh, every year and, um, hone in even more.
Right, and that's, that's always a good thing, especially since these are new. Um, you know, we haven't had, you know, a set of core values that we've adopted before. Um, you know, in theory, you want them to be, uh, the same year after year, but, you know, because this is the first year we're attempting to do this, you know, tweaking is always inviting, particularly as we move forward. Because again, we'll, we'll certainly do strategic planning again, um, next year.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, not necessarily on the core values, but on the slot analysis or goals and objectives or implementation or any of the, uh, programs listed in the tables?
No, I think it covered everything. We did that there.
Great.
I liked it, except, you know, you didn't use my word, Joe, but that's okay.
Bold, bold was included.
Yeah, uh, I, I like the, uh, I like the, uh, progress on the goals and objectives, so I appreciate that. Thanks. That's, that's a good way to just keep track of the way, uh, where we're going and where we're headed.
Yeah, and I'll try to refine those a little bit before we actually publish them as part of the, the budget document, too, just so it's a little clearer. It makes it easier for us to read it because we're, we're involved in it, but if the public gets a hold of it, I want them to be able to understand kind of how we've gotten where we are.
So do you need a motion?
I don't. This is just discussion tonight.
Okay.
Like I said, when we, when we go to adopt the budget, it'll be part of the whole budget packet. You know, this'll just be part of that.
And this document will be up on the webpage easily accessible after we agree with it?
Yes.
Okay.
And even on our new website, when it's soon available, and we need to work around and navigate. Okay.
Seems like they, maybe one last, when, when this does go public, say for the Riverfront project that's on here, the responsibility will be shown as well. So you'll have, okay, so some of that will be filled. Obviously, we haven't done anything with it.
Right, and responsibilities will be shared, but, you know, if, if we don't have a clear completion date, it'll just say, you know, not yet. No, we're starting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, last call for that. All right, that brings us to our announcements and reports, I'll begin with this one. The next meeting is Monday, March thirteenth, twenty thirteen. Um, and then also we have volunteer opportunities available on the Historic District Commission, the police auxiliary and the police auxiliary. Please email town@Sykesville.net for more information about volunteering with the town. And I would like to announce that we have received a letter of interest or intent um from a his- from a historic district, potential historic district commissioner that I will be very excited to appoint, um, I've already interviewed him. Okay, so, um, so that brings us to staff updates, Joe, do you want to start?
Uh, sure, uh, two two things, uh, one, just to give everybody an update kind of how uh the Main Street construction is going, or at least what we're expecting over the next two weeks or so. Uh, so they'll still be doing work, a little bit weather permitting, assuming it doesn't rain the rest of the week. A little bit more work there at the main intersection, but really they're gearing up to kind of start spreading out around downtown, so uh hopefully free up that intersection and then start moving closer to uh the sin, oh, I'm sorry, the Spout Hill Springfield intersection there. You know, kind of get away from downtown a little bit. Um, that said, they are preparing to do work on the south side of Main Street, so I know we discussed at one point, um, uh, some of the work that's required down there is gonna let's just say it requires a very deep hole to be dug right in the middle of Main Street, really next to the vine and uh Sykesville Station. Um, there was some talk about approving night work for that, matter of fact, we did approve night work for that, however, uh, there's been some ongoing conversations with state highways and some other issues with what what night work would entail down there. So what they've decided to do is now is really just shut it down during the day, so they're gonna close that area uh between the hours of eight AM and three PM. Uh, they'll open it up at the uh when they leave, obviously, but uh they are gonna be doing that work during the day instead of at night as we had previously approved. Um, what that does do, and that's supposed to start next week, so starting on uh March sixth, I believe it is, uh, is Monday. Uh, and again, eight o'clock to three o'clock is still their working hours. What that does do will offer, uh, because we did approve night work for some of the lining effort that was going along Main Street, and that did occur, there were several days where there were the crews were out there, however, they did not, they were not able to complete that because of some uh various issues with pipe sizes and linings, and that that didn't necessarily match what was on the plans. Uh, because they're shutting down that that side of the street for a little while, they're actually gonna be able to finish that lining effort during the day as well, so again, uh, it might uh might, I guess, it it certainly helps the people that were bothered by some of the night work that was going on, but.
Okay.
Um, so that's uh that's kind of the progress along Main Street, um, Springfield Avenue is still a little bit slow going, just because of the the amount of rock that they're running into. Um, but, you know, it's it's slow and steady on Springfield Avenue, that's what it's really hard to say about that. Uh, again, the guys on Main Street, they're they're really hitting it hard and trying to get it get it done as quickly as possible, but um, you know, it's still gonna be a couple of months before we're we're out of the out of the woods on that construction.
Can I ask, uh, or maybe say a comment, um, what's the communication plan with the folks that are going to be most impacted by that work? And so I'm thinking of the merchants and possibly some of the residents that are close by, there could be people that are working remotely, that could be hearing very loud noises, there could be an impact if people want to come into the businesses. Are we doing anything to make sure that there is some sort of either a daily or every couple of days email blast that goes out so that everybody knows what the status of the project is?
Yeah, when we get the updates from the contractor, uh, usually they do what what they call two-week look-aheads, uh, that show some of what their schedule is. I do try to forward that on to the merchant group, or actually, I I send it to uh the person that's in charge of the merchant group to hopefully disseminate amongst uh those members. Uh, we also try to put it on our website, so it's there in case, you know, that email doesn't go out, they can always go to our website to find it there. Um, but as far as like a s- individual email blast, we're not doing that to like the entire town, so that everybody knows what's going on.
And I guess I'm I'm most focused on this fif- I think we heard a fifteen-foot hole that needs to be put in and um, the level of disruption that's with that particular placement and shutting down of the road. It's a bit different than what's been happening, is there anything that we can do or ask for that's in addition to what we're getting so that we can do better communication during that time?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly expect the contractor, if there's a if there's a service disruption, that they're they're the ones responsible to notify those affected parties. Um, if it's if it's literally just roadwork and and noise, I'm not sure there's any real other notification that that can go out, I mean.
Joe, is the the road closure uh beginning and ending where, so that?
Yeah, it's it's Baldwin Drive itself, so there's still, there still will be, there'll be a little bit of a flagging operation for some of the lining work that's gonna happen, they'd be able to get people down to to Baldwin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but once you pass, there won't be no passing Baldwin Drive, so you won't be able to go over the bridge.
Which means nobody can come in from the south end. So will the, will there be a uh a kiosk out on thirty-two detouring potential customers to our Main Street to enter Main Street at a different location?
So state highways was scheduled to put out the 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 signs today, I did not get out there to know if they actually physically went up, but I I do know the plan was to make sure that those uh those message boards went up today.
Thank you.
So using of over of nighttime work is gonna by necessity lengthen the overall schedule? Did they give you a a swag of how long it will be, or?
I I've not gotten a, this is how long, there, how many days the road will will necessarily be closed, but again, because they're opening it and packing up at three PM every day, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a a significant disruption, now again, when CSX did their work a few months ago, it was closed the entire time, like there was no reopening, it was just, it was just shut down.
Even when they were completely done, they didn't reopen it.
They didn't reopen it right away, right, they waited till Monday morning.
Yeah.
So is there any more night work scheduled now, or is it?
As of right now, I think the line, that, the small, it was it was gonna be like another day or two of of night work for that lining, but because they're doing that during the day, we have not gotten any notification that there's additional night work scheduled, it doesn't mean they're not gonna ask for it again, because there was, there was some discussion about some of the um the service lines being uh being lined as well, and they're gonna try to do that at night, but right now, I think they're make, they're working on all the main lines, and until they get that done, they're not gonna move to the services yet.
So if they if they uh do want more night work, would they have to come back for us for uh approval, or would would that be under the first approval we did?
Yeah, so we we approved basically two sections of night work, one was gonna be for the um, let's just call it the the big hole at the bottom at the end of Main Street, and then the lining effort that they basically already completed. Um, if it was gonna be somewhat close in in time to uh the night work that they were already doing, I was gonna let it go with the approvals that had already happened. But if this is gonna be a month from now or two months from now that they come and do it, we'll make sure they come back or I come back and make that request again.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Joe.
Have any word on um potential bridge work, or um are they even looking at that right now?
No, well, no, the the contractors that are out there now are not looking at the at the bridge work, that's really a state highways issue that we're still only in communication with them. Um, but there there's no timeframe or money set aside for that just yet.
Okay, thanks.
It is gonna be part of our, uh, they call it the consolidate consolidated transportation plan priority letter, the the bridge will be mentioned in that. Obviously, if the the project's not mentioned in the priority letter, it's much more difficult to get funding, so the fact that it is mentioned in there, you know, hopefully brings it to the level that state highways will actually start uh start looking at.
Thanks.
And we did have previous uh support from the previous transportation secretary on that on that work, so.
Again, I think it, I think there is, it is still very much a priority, um, it's just a matter of, you know, getting somebody to spend money.
Is is the yellow caution tape still up? I think I saw it a few days ago, uh, but it's been a few days since I've driven by that uh area. Is that still up, and is there anything that we can do to?
I think it is still up, um, I'm almost positive we've we've notified the Howard County side, the Howard County uh state highway side, uh, to make sure that gets repaired.
Okay.
So notice has been given, you know, we've we've made people aware of it, this is when they can schedule the work.
Okay.
Great.
Questions on Main Street? So I have one other, uh, I guess, request, this is actually on behalf of the the member that's not here tonight, the council member that's not here today. Uh, but as most of you know, uh, because she did announce it last time, uh, Councilmember Garoff has been accepted to the uh Maryland um uh Leadership Program.
Leadership Maryland.
Leadership Maryland program, um, you know, it's an eight-month program, there's a lot of uh benefits to the individuals that get to participate in that, you learn a lot about uh just the state of Maryland, it's gonna cover uh, you know, things such as uh the educational system here in Maryland, criminal justice system, you know, how the environment is impacted, you know, Maryland's a pretty unique state when it comes to all that. But um as with anything else, there's a cost associated with participating. Um, so the program itself is uh eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, there is a grant that uh the the council member was able to achieve, so there's basically a thirty-three hundred dollar gap or uh, yeah, thirty-three hundred dollar gap that still needs to be uh paid. Um, this was not something that we anticipated, so it was not actually a line item in our budget. Um, it was, we didn't know about it when we did our budget revision, so we didn't really have a chance to discuss it. So really what I need is, you know, because there's there's not that mechanism in our budget right now, I need either direction from council to uh, you know, potentially provide this uh, this funding uh for this particular program. Um, you know, there's certainly some benefits to having a council member that participates in this, but again, it just hasn't been something that we've talked about uh and set as a priority, there's no policy for for this type of activity. Uh, you know, we don't have like a a set amount of money that council members have access to for training or leadership programs. Uh, so really, I'm just looking for feedback from you to see if this is something that that we want to establish and want to do this year. Um, and uh and see if it's something we might want to continue moving forward with.
I I have a question with that, and Al, I believe that you got your certification through MML?
Yep.
Was there a fee associated with that?
Yeah, so uh I think I paid for that ten years ago, it was five hundred dollars at the time.
Oh, okay, so it was minimal.
Yeah, it was minimal, so.
But I do believe that with the mayor, you get certifications as well, correct?
Um, I get all kinds of certifications that are unrelated to being mayor, um, and I pay for it, um, on an annual basis. Um, and I think most of us with professional licensers and credit credit credentials do the same. Um, but no, I I've never tapped into, uh, I I think, you know, the 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 town offers a a tuition reimbursement to its staff for uh that we're all aware of, and then it's been part of the budget for uh eons, um, but I as mayor have never tapped into anything like that. Um, did Councilwoman Garoff provide you with a specific list of um, um, I would say benefits to the town or to this body with her uh participation as part of the program?
I did not receive any, you know, other than the information that's readily available on the Leadership Maryland like website.
I read that as well.
Is it possible to table the requests for her to be able to advocate on her own behalf, or is there a timeline associated with the need?
I do know that there's a deadline of March first, which is why I'm bringing it to you, uh, March first for payment, which is under like Wednesday. Um, I think if you pay after that, it's, there's like an extra, you know, two hundred dollar, three hundred dollar charge.
So I I I'm gonna say I'm not in favor of this, um, you know, the five hundred dollars for the MML, that teaches you a lot of things that has to do with how the council people are running the town. Um, you know, it'd be different if it was like two fifty, five hundred dollars, but even then, I think we're kind of uh setting ourselves up for maybe reimbursing somebody to go to school for something that doesn't involve what they have to do in council.
Yeah, I I would be really interested to hear Councilwoman Garoff's um justification for her request, um, for 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 our consideration. Um, if if uh reimbursement is an option, because we're certainly not gonna be able to make that decision without that justification this evening, um, for her to uh have that conversation with us if she so wishes, um, I would be in favor of that. In the meantime, obviously, um, the tuition will have to be paid, um, on her behalf, on her own, I mean, so.
And it, yeah, I mean, I think we, you know, we're we're all getting a stipend, I mean, it's it's pretty small, but.
You mean to do this?
Well, yes.
Pretty small.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want, you know, I really appreciate, she's really getting uh the town out there in this this thing she's doing, I mean, I think there's some benefit there, but um tuition-wise, I, just just me, I don't know if anybody agrees with me, it's.
Maybe there's something hidden I'm 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 not aware of, and that's why I'm hesitant to say I'm not in favor of it without hearing those things. Um, but I I do realize that Wednesday is Wednesday, and we don't have information to have this conversation.
With without her advocating, I I'm inclined to agree with you, Al, but I'd I'd like to give her the opportunity, I wonder if we could table it and then maybe do some sort of a rein- or a reimbursement sort of action after, kind of like you said, Mayor. If, and again, I don't know what she's gonna say, I don't know if that's gonna push me over the edge or not in a different way, but right now, I'm leaning towards where you are. But again, I'd love for her to be able to advocate for it, and I'd love any one of us to be able the opportunity to advocate for a similar type of initiative if we, if it uh came across us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Joe?
That's all I need.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, thank you.
All right. No, it's a staff update.
Oh, oh, the staff, the umbrella of the staff.
It was apparently just brought to staff's attention.
That's nice, that's nice, can I bug Joe about another staff problem?
Yes.
No, hey, Joe, I was just wondering how's it going with the uh maintenance workers, I noticed there was a sign up this weekend, um, how was that?
Hiring.
Hiring, yes, yes.
Yeah, we are still, we're still one down.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, for the most part, we're we're maintaining.
Okay, great.
Now, that that said, we are looking for a part-time person to, you know, handle some of those splashback duties this year, though Derek and I loved doing it last year, we'd like to pass that off.
Did the public hear that? Joe, say that louder.
All right, so is there gonna be a, you know, the, I know a few people might be interested in that, but is there gonna be like a a job description of that up on the website, or is it gonna just kind of be? Don't know yet?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, it's early, I know.
When we get into recruiting, we'll cer- we'll certainly do that.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Anyone else for staff update questions for specifically the town manager? Okay, I'm gonna call Mr. Chief, microphone falling to the pulpit, although that's not really what it is in this case, microphone.
Lectern.
Lectern, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, we're gonna talk about the public safety report covering just fourteen days, February sixth through the twentieth, but first, I actually wanted to address some questions that I got about some of the incidents, um, so one question was about the fourth-degree burglary that we had in the pack, and I don't know if you saw that, where someone had actually uh forced entry into the blue rail car down by the Sykesville Station. And the question was exactly um about what a fourth-degree burglary is, and that is simply a a unlawful breaking into a storehouse or an outbuilding, something that's not a residence or a business, so that was basically the answer to that question.
Excuse me, Chief, was there any damage done that anyone's aware of?
Oh, they broke the lock to get in, and we had Derek go to to replace it, but there was some trash inside that could have been left by the 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 culprits, but no major damage.
We have high hopes for that caboose, and they're right around the corner, so they better lay off.
It's been a couple of times now that's happened in the past, unfortunately, yeah.
And I know in the past, there's been a couple times where people used that for shelter. In this circumstance, was this not?
Uh, from what I've saw in the reports, I don't know if you remember, it appeared it was somebody was squatting in it or, you know, using it for shelter, very possibly, but hopefully Derek was able to fix the locking mechanism so that, you know, a little more difficult for somebody to get in there next time.
If someone needed shelter that was in our town, instead of breaking in, they could come to the town, and they could they could ask for different services that are available in the county, correct? So that would be a more.
There is a homeless shelter in Westminster, and we could.
That'd be a more proactive sort of way that we could handle this, and then they wouldn't be at risk of possibly going to jail, right?
Absolutely, sure.
Just want to give another option.
Absolutely.
I mean, thank you, Councilman Schofield.
Yeah, it's all good.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, the other question was about several overdoses that were reported on this uh this particular public safety report. Um, in both cases, uh, the person survived, thankfully. Um, in one of the cases, our very own illustrious Lieutenant Kilgore actually performed CPR and administered Narcan to to one of the.
I was asked for not doing anything.
And that's not the first time you've done that, had to administer CPR, um, but I think that was.
Lieutenant just sits in your new truck now, that's all that you do.
She does, have a nice guy in your truck.
So so Chief, just a question on that, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, so now.
That's what I'm here for.
Do we, do we, do we charge the person with overdose for Narcan, or we just get a re- reimbursement from the state, or is it county, or just comes out of our budget?
We lawfully can't charge anybody with any type of crime because of the Good Samaritan Act, so it's it's, we get our our Narcan from the county free, I believe, so there's no no reimbursement involved.
Great.
Just a an act of service that we perform.
If they didn't have the money, would you not do them?
No, no, I mean, no, I just.
Pay by credit card, maybe?
I'm just curious, just curious.
It's a good question, but we do get it, and there's apparently an unlimited supply at the county.
Great.
Thankfully, we don't have to use it too often, but um we we have our share.
At our, at the police day that they ran, I was actually trained in carry one, because I'm at the college, uh, and the libraries a lot, I carry one in my backpack. Just in case I ever walk, I I went into the men's room to do some things, and I saw a sign saying, don't leave if your friend, and I went, you know, this must be a thing. And I got trained, and if I ever do go into a classroom. And I got trained and if I ever do go into a classroom and find someone on the floor and I, I'm ready.
Everybody should have access to it and, and carry it with them if, if they're so inclined and it's a very, very good tool to have.
And in all seriousness, I mean, you probably saved someone's life. So I mean, that's, I mean, that's, you know, thank, thank you at the very least, right?
Uh, not pretty for sure.
Yeah.
Chief, I believe that you had mentioned recently that the death rate here in Carroll County has been reduced with overdose, I mean, the overdose rate has reduced.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And do you feel that the correlation is with the Narcan that is being distributed to those that are in need?
Certainly helpful, yeah. I, I'm, I'm sure that it has reduced the number.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So we were one of the highest and now I believe that we're close to one of the lowest.
In the county?
No, in the state.
County by state, yes, let's say county by state.
Yeah, it was a significant reduction, not only in the county, but here in town as well from twenty twenty-two compared to twenty twenty-one. So something's working.
Yeah, absolutely.
More awareness, education, Narcan, uh, sure.
We, but we didn't have an exorbitant amount. I mean, one's too many.
Yes.
But we didn't have, I can count on one hand, I think, luck, luckily. So even though we've reduced it by fifty-seven percent, it's, we didn't have like, you know, a large.
I think we went from nine the previous year to one last year. And the one that we had wasn't an opiate.
Right.
Like an over-the-counter type of medication.
And some of the ones from last year were from um first manner with a, like a mix-up on the medication. So it wasn't a um, a purposeful opiate addiction driven issue.
And even in one of these two cases, actually Lieutenant and I had a conversation about this earlier, uh, we were actually called to respond outside our area to handle that one. So um, in, in theory, we, we shouldn't get credit, if you will, probably not a good word. But we shouldn't have to carry that overdose uh as a town total because it actually happened outside of town, but the state police asked us to go over to Springfield to, to assist with the case over there. So keep in mind.
No, that's good, that's good. Uh.
Absolutely.
Well, I don't think that everybody always understands all the great work that the police force does. And so it's just one of those things that it's good to celebrate the fact that, you know, here's a life safe. So it's awesome.
Way to go, LT.
Yeah.
Stay in your truck more.
That's why we give them a nice shiny new truck. And actually, in the next case, uh, there, there was a question about a death investigation that you saw. Uh, we took a report for. It was a cardiac arrest involving an elderly gentleman. And in that case as well, uh, one of our newest officers, Officer Jacobs, uh, performed CPR on that subject and unfortunately it was, was too late, but um, again.
That was a resident.
Correct.
That was here in town.
Correct. But that wasn't overdose related.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, the last question was about a uh evading, uh traffic, uh evading uh question, uh an incident where, again, our newest officer, Officer Jacobs, uh, in my mind, used excellent judgment and maturity. Saw a, uh, there was a report of a speeding vehicle on thirty-two. He put himself in a position to uh observe, saw the vehicle, uh, proceeded to get behind it. Uh, they came to a, a stop at the, at Springfield at the light. The vehicle took, uh, let me back up a second. Officer Jacobs proceeded, turned on his license siren. The vehicle immediately sped off. Uh, Officer Jacobs decided not to pursue just because it was based on just traffic offenses only, which is the right decision to make in, in today's day and age. So excellent maturity on, on his part and unfortunately, we believe the subject got away. Uh, we did notify Howard County uh to be on the lookout for the vehicle, but I don't know whether they stopped him or not. So again, twenty years ago, we wouldn't let the, anybody run from us, but in today's day and age, if it's just for traffic violations, we don't pursue.
Today's climate, but it's also today's lieutenant versus twenty years ago lieutenant. You've admitted that. That's why I can say that. That's, I didn't know you twenty years ago. Yeah.
We'd be chasing them right now.
I, I like the restraint that, that you report.
There's a lot of maturity and that's, that's the kinda officers we're looking for. Absolutely. So if we can get to the public, that was all the questions that I had. Uh, but there may be more. If we get the public safety report, uh, you'll see there was this total four hundred and eighty-eight total events. Um, some of the few highlights, uh, twenty-four foot patrols, two hundred and sixty-eight patrol checks, thirty-eight traffic enforcement initiatives, again, four hundred and eighty-eight total events, nine incident reports, which we've talked about a few already. Um, any other questions about any of the other incident reports that were listed?
Chief, just for a quick clarification, what's the difference between school crossing detail and school crossing guard?
Excellent question. Uh, we put the school crossing guard, we added that category in order to capture the number of times our two volunteers actually work at school crossings. Yeah. So if, if you see just school cross, uh, school crossing detail, that may be one of our officers actually doing it.
Okay.
I do have a question. Uh, it was handled obviously correctly. Some, a resident came in to report a fraud and you're not charged on her credit card. As I understand it, that's why I'm asking, as I understand it, some uh financial institutions require a report number.
Please report. Almost all of them.
And I'm kinda aiming at the camera by saying, don't forget people, you probably do wanna come in and file the appropriate paperwork so you don't lose out on a option that is available to you. And you guys know how to take care of it, so everybody gets what they need.
Absolutely.
If it was just a form letter, it'd be even better, but it certainly isn't, is it?
Yeah, no, it's not. It takes a little time, but again, it's one of the services we provide. Very, very small chance of identifying the culprits. You know, could be in, in another country committing these crimes, but we still take the report and try to refer the, each victim to their appropriate resources.
I believe that the car, where you sound broader, I believe car owners are given certain privileges, but if they don't file, they may not be able to avail themselves of it. By coming in and getting that report number, I do know, you know, I, I, in a similar vein, my car was hit. I found out about it days later because I went in and filed a report and was told, oh, well, you saved yourself two hundred and fifty dollars. Because you can then truthfully say it was a hit and run, because I didn't know about it. If I hadn't done that, they would have told me later, oh, well, you gotta pay an extra two hundred and fifty.
Absolutely.
So thank you for doing that for our people.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Guy.
I, I love you, Ty, but it's a little scary. Are aliens on it?
It's because I don't believe in them.
So what, one other comment um in reference to community policing. So I really appreciate the humanity piece that uh some of the officers are showing, going back to family members after someone's passed, these sorts of things. Uh, playing basketball with kids, showing little kids police car, that's great. I would really like to see the number of events increase if possible. So I'll throw that out to you. I love to see what they're doing and if we can continue to see that trend go in a more positive direction than just the five uh times, that'd be great.
Absolutely. I think as the weather improves.
Sure.
Certainly get out more often, get out of the cars and do more foot patrols and be more engaged. But we haven't had a terribly bad winter, so I can't use that too much of, as an excuse, but I think you'll see these numbers increase.
A, a, as per our core values.
Yep.
That we've previously noted. Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. One last thing I did wanna mention is our, about recruitment. Uh, and Joe knows this, of course. Uh, we've been very fortunate that uh we're, we're starting the background on uh highly coveted individual that we're gonna add to our, our police department. Very seasoned uh investigator from the state police that uh we've been very fortunate to, to snag. And we're looking for uh great things from, from him. If everything, uh, we're still early in the hiring stage, but we don't anticipate any, any wrinkles. And I think he'll, he'll be a huge asset to our department and our town. So uh little luck once in a while goes, goes a long way. I think we lucked out this time. So stay tuned.
Good luck with that. In all seriousness.
We have another one we're looking at as well. So um feast or famine, right? Been advertising for months and months and, and getting.
As long as we have more feast and everyone else has more famine.
True.
With, with respect to this topic, yes.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right. That brings us to council committee reports. Anyone present here this evening with anything to share?
Um, I would like to mention that last Wednesday, on the twenty-second, I believe, we had our H D C meeting and um aside from our applications, uh, we did as a committee meet with the new um.
Consultants.
Consultants, thank you. Consultants that will be updating our H D C guidelines. So we're looking forward to that.
That's awesome. I'm so excited that's finally happening.
Yes.
Thank you.
One quick one um for uh planning commission. Sorry, did you ask?
No, sir.
Um, for the planning commission, as you heard from the mayor, sometimes they're exciting. Um, and uh on March sixth at seven P M, um, we will have another planning commission meeting. So I just encourage people to come to those because you never know what's gonna happen.
Cause you never know if somebody's gonna be in the audience expressing themselves uh, uh, you know, with body language.
We should all zoom in on that.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, um, so that was the planning commission H D C. Anything else from anyone?
Uh, D S C, um, Downtown Seckville Connection had its first Black History Month event this month. It was an art show in partnership with Barrier Free this past Friday at Barrier Free from five thirty to seven thirty. It went very well. And on Saturday, we had pleasant enough weather for the Cocoa Crawl, which is a merchant-run event that the Downtown Seckville Connection assists with. Uh, it was sold out in advance, three hundred and fifty mugs, twenty participating businesses offering various hot cocoa samples. Um, each merchant reports going through four to five gallons of hot cocoa.
That was four, two, five, not four, T, five.
Four, two, five.
Even still, that's a lot.
And the merchants seem to be very happy with it.
Awesome. That's great. I got to attend the uh, the Black History Month art uh exhibit at Barrier Free. And um if you guys have not been to Barrier Free, let's start with that. You should just, anytime they have an open house, stop in. The participants are beautiful, beautiful human beings and they will make your day, no matter how bad of an attitude you might come in there with. And uh, and then the fact that, that the art was um done by youngsters and individuals with special needs as adults or youngsters. Um, and that there were students that were given the opportunity to do some research so that they could uh, as far as black history is concerned, and then create their art as a result of that, that homework and that research. Um, was really great. So I think all around it was a beautifully designed um event and I'm looking forward to next year's. But get your butts to Barrier Free. All right. Thank you.
And this is what you would have gotten if you went to the Cocoa Crawl. A very nice mug. Uh, my wife, my daughter and my cousin were able to go while I was splitting some wood.
No wonder the three hundred and fifty tickets, right? You got three right out of your house.
I did.
All right, all right. All right.
Do you want to uh announce the Gate House Museum open house Saturday?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Well, I don't have the exact times. Is it three or one to three?
Twelve to four. And it's.
Saturday, the fourth.
Fourth. Thank you. So there you did it. You did know.
I, well, I knew it was on the day. It wasn't for the.
So we'll put that all together because it was in little bits and pieces, like a puzzle. And so the Gate House Museum is having an open house at the Gate House this Saturday, the fourth of March, from twelve noon to four P M. Get your butts to the Gate House. I think everybody at this state will at least be there for a little bit of time. Good.
And for all those who don't know where that is, it's across from the splash pad.
Yeah, right. Everybody knows where the splash pad is now. In Millard Cooper Park. Yes. Okay, dog.
And unfortunately, I will not be able to be there this weekend. I'm, I'm taking my cousin home. So, and she lives in upstate Vermont.
Well, if you're making that round trip again, I will excuse you from your obligations at the.
I would, I would much rather be at the Gate House.
I know that. I know that. Well, thank you for the uh, for letting us know. Anyone else with any more reports or comments or exciting news? Okay, well then at this point, I'm gonna announce that we are having a closed session and I'm going to read the rationale for that because it is statutorily required. The meeting is being proposed closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five B, and in this case, number seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. This evening, that consultation will take place uh having to do with the Warfield contract. There's no need for a motion for recess, Councilman Grassley. I will simply state that we will be going into that recess for five minutes, which will allow those in the chambers to clear so that we can then go into closed session. But first, thank you, everyone who has commented out for the whole meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So recess.
Sure you don't need a vote for recess?